I think we're gonna start. So I'm gonna call this meeting to order. This is the Environmental and Sustainability Committee meeting. We're here to talk about the Woodlands Ordinance. And I'm the only counselor here. I have Ken Shea, the City Council Attorney. Amy from SCANS is here. Vern McArthur from Springfield Climate Justice Coalition. Jay, I believe, is also representing SCANS. And thank you, Alex Sherman, for being here. So we'll get right into the discussion. I know that, Ken, would you wanna start with your comments on it?
Yes, I think I would. Alex, can I ask you? I had called Tommy Ash to see if he had any concerns on this. And he simply deferred me to yourself so that, do you have any concerns based on what's been submitted here as a draft?
No, I don't, I don't think so. I mean, it's, it's still, I don't know if... I, I, to be perfectly honest, I don't know if I've read the, the most recent draft through. When was that? When was the most recent draft sent?
I think you might have gotten it, Alex.
I did, okay.
Like, right after the last meeting, right, Jay? Jay's the, um, the...
Yeah, I wasn't able to get to the last meeting, so...
Yeah, and we missed you that time.
Yeah, I did see one of the, from the most recent one that I remember reviewing. I mean, it looked, it looked okay to me. You know, it's still, my question still remains as enforcement and how that, that part of it's gonna proceed. But it looked like a lot of the language from the previous versions was, was cleaned up. And it was a lot more clear as to what, you know, the ordinance was trying to achieve.
So that, that's good to know. And maybe you oughta, I just assumed you touched base, if you haven't, with Tom Ash. Just to be sure that the department head is on, knows what we're doing and is on board. He did say, whatever you went along with, he was fine with. But I just assumed that you hear it from him also, so that we don't get it all done. And then all of a sudden, the chair, the head of the Parks Department says, wait a minute, what's going on here? Okay?
Sure, I'll make a point to set up a meeting directly with him. And just to discuss the finer points of, of what you guys have put together.
So shifting a little over to the draft that we've got. On the first page, one, two, three, four, in that fifth paragraph, I wanna take out, in the second line, it should end with "resiliency plan period," and remove "and that additional regulations are necessary to ensure the protection of woodlands while recognizing their significant value to the city of Springfield." That's sort of superfaces language, because we can at any time change or amend any city ordinance. So I would rather that that come out of there, because it just adds, anytime you're drafting an ordinance or any law, the fewer words and statements you can make, the easier it is to interpret and, and enforce it. And so that's really not necessary language, because we can do that whether it states it or it doesn't state it. Okay? So that would be the first recommendation. The next one would be, if you go into X2 definitions, you go down near the bottom. The one that starts with "global climate mitigation," that entire paragraph, I think, should be removed. It's simply what we call in the law, a lot of weasel words and, and statements that could open up items that we don't even wanna get into. It says "sustainability development practices which capture future development opportunities." Again, we can do that where the ordinance is written. "While minimizing the risk to and loss of some sensitive national resources." There's no definition in here of what those are. And I don't know, we wanna get into trying to do that. And optimizing the tree canopy, well, that's what this does. And maintaining the integrity of wetlands and woodlands. We have a wetlands or Conservation Commission, which is jurisdiction over that anyways. And then "as community values relevant to our municipal decision-making process." Well, there's a lot of city-making process and development that goes on. This ordinance is designed to protect the woodlands, and that's what we wanted to do. We would, okay?
Yeah. So these are definitions. You wanted to take that definition out?
Yeah, I'd like to take that out. I don't think it adds anything, and it certainly doesn't weaken it by taking it out. But then it comes down to, you know, what are all these other decision-making processes? We're not involved in that. This is an ordinance designed to protect woodlands. It's, as we get into the rest of it, it's pretty clear. Okay? And this is just the definition page. And I, I just think we need to clean that up. It really doesn't add anything.
Let me just ask, Ken, if there was any reason why we needed to have that in there? Do we still think that we need to have global climate change mitigation defined?
I mean, we're defining a Woodlands Act. We're not defining global, that covers a lot of stuff.
But the reason we're doing that is because of global climate change.
Sure we are, that's why we're doing it.
Yeah, I think originally you had actually asked for some of these definitions, because we talk about climate change mitigation in the ordinance. And so then there was some comment about, well, that's unclear. And so some of this stuff was added at the prompting of, of, I thought.
I...
But maybe not.
I think I have, but I don't remember.
I agree with you, Ken, that I think the less words, the better.
Yeah.
You know, 'cause when you go to court, they say, just answer the question, that's it.
Well, not only that, but we're sort of opening up beyond, because now it's getting into woodlands. I mean, this, the other stuff in here is pretty clear, straightforward. It accomplishes what I think we're trying to do. And so...
If we don't need it, then, you know...
It doesn't add, and taking it out doesn't weaken the statute in any way, or the ordinance in any way.
Because we wanted, the other thing that we wanted to do, and it could be, and this is where we mentioned like climate mitigation later in the ordinance, is we wanna differentiate it from like the idea of like Alex's ordinance and some of that emphasis on like historic trees and significant trees and that. This is not that. So I think like, as long as it's clear that this is not about significant trees or historic trees, but that this is about, you know, climate mitigation and the city's own climate action plan, then I think, you know, I'm fine removing stuff. But I just think we need climate change mitigation in the ordinance somewhere. Or we could get pushback from people saying, well, Alex already has a significant tree, blah, blah, blah. And it's like, well, this isn't about that.
No, it's not. This, and, and what you're trying to accomplish is preserving these woodland lots. And the statute without that language does that, it accomplishes that. And this is opening up Pandora's Box into other things that people could use to define things that we're not trying to accomplish here. So it's the Law Department's recommendation that that come out. Okay? Going over to the next page and...
Attorney Shea, could I just jump in for a second? Counselor Gobon?
Yes, go ahead, Jay.
Just to add a little bit to this. So you're right, Attorney Shea was not the one that suggested that language go in there. It was actually Brian Skelly from SCANS. He really liked the idea of having that language in here. But to Attorney Shea's point, as I understand, the purpose of these definitions, it's to help define certain terms that are used in the ordinance so that, you know, you don't have to keep defining them in every single section, right? So you define, you know, clear-cutting once, and then you can refer to clear-cutting in the ordinance, and then refer back to the definitions. We don't actually use the term "global climate change mitigation" anywhere in the ordinance. I'm not necessarily saying that's a good or a bad thing. I'm just saying that's a thing, we don't refer to it. But maybe this gets resolved, 'cause I'm personally, I think, okay with excluding it from the definitions. Maybe this gets resolved in part because the ordinance refers to the city of Springfield's Climate Action and Resilience Plan, which I haven't read in a little while, but I, I know it talks about climate change and, at length. So I tend to agree with Attorney Shea, like, we're trying to enshrine a new rule into law. We might not explicitly need to use those words to, to get the intent. And if we wanted to create that intent and use that word somewhere, you know, putting it into like the findings, you know, might be a more appropriate way to do it. 'Cause the findings, again, and I refer to the attorney on this, is like, the way for you to kind of explain, like, here's why we're doing this. So those are my thoughts on, on how that, we might find a middle ground.
I mean, you could probably wiggle that phrase, if, if you're sensitive to want global climate change mitigation, in the very first paragraph where, I'm not a good draftsman right on the sitting here, but the city of Springfield finds a preservation stewardship. You could sort of wiggle that phrase in that paragraph somewhere, because that's, that's your main paragraph that's setting up what the rest of this document's trying to do. And so the global climate change mitigation might have more impact for those of you that are sensitive to that phrase, if you stuck it up at the top. Just that phrase and take out the rest of it, and you could, then you sort of got the best of both worlds.
And we actually say it in the first, in the second sentence, it says, "in an effort, the effort to mitigate the effects of climate change."
Right, so you've got it in there, it's not...
You do, yeah. And again, I like Jay's point that we do reference the Climate Action Resiliency Plan, which is totally for, to mitigate the climate change in our city and globally.
The next one I have questions on, and it's just a question, so I understand, is under X3, Paragraph B, "all parcels greater than 5,000 feet in size." I mean, is that? I don't know what our average lot size is in the city. We don't, we, we don't wanna make this so small that we're dealing with almost every building lot. So maybe someone can help me, I mean...
Alex might know that.
We actually, could I, could I just put in? We actually had a conversation about this a couple meetings ago, and we talked to Alex about it. And because originally, Ken, you had proposed something that was like 10,000 feet. And then we talked about, we do actually wanna deal with almost every building lot, because there are not many left that are wooded lots, so it's, so...
All right, that's, that's all, and it's...
Yeah, so, so we'd had a whole conversation about how do we address the fact that the remaining lots are smaller lots? And, and this was the solution that we came up with.
We have a lot of lots in the city that are much smaller, so that, I'm just nervous. I don't wanna get down, all the way down, so that almost every single lot in the city, we're gonna get challenged on. So 5,000, you all feel is a comfortable starting point.
Yeah.
Without getting us too, yes, Alex? Yes?
Just for the record, my recommendation was 10,000 square feet.
Right, that was, I think you and I had talked about that. That's where we thought the recommendation...
Yeah, and, and then we had discussed that we don't want it to be that small, because, that large, because that eliminates over 60% of like the lots that are currently being clear-cut. So it's, it would actually like not serve the purpose that we're trying to serve. So we know that Alex's and Ken had both said like more large industrial lots, and that we would really like to start at this level as well, because we know there's gonna be negotiations, and we're most likely not gonna get everything we want. And so if we're starting at 5,000, we figure we're still gonna end up losing dozens of lots over the next few years, because most likely, we're not gonna get it held at 5,000 as part of the negotiation process. But I would just say, like, looking at the, you know, 110 lots that we've lost in this area in the past eight years, they were all residential lots, so...
I wasn't trying to say we should take it, I was just questioning...
Oh, I just wanna make sure everyone's on the same page of like that discussion, because when we go forward, we all have to kind of say, and not by we, I mean Zeta, you know, Counselor Gobon and the other counselors, and the SCANS supporters, and the residents that are gonna be advocating for this with their counselors. We need to be clear that that was the purpose. And if we had wanted to just target commercial industrial lots, we would have gone with 10,000. But we, we want to target residential development as well.
Okay, all right, I'm, I'm fine. I was just asking the question. Um, let's see, what have I got? Okay, the next one I think I have a question on was D. It says, "All proposed or implemented activities having taken place at the time this chapter was duly presented to the City Council for consideration shall be considered applicable to the terms and provisions of this chapter." I mean, how do we know what all the proposed and implemented activities are? I mean, how are we gonna, what is this paragraph adding to the Woodlands Act dealing with the removal of trees?
I, I can jump in on this one. I hope, Amy, you won't mind me stealing your thunder, but, but through the chair. The, the fear is with this Attorney Shea is that once this gets introduced to the City Council and people start talking about it, we understand there could be some hesitation from the development community. And so the, the fear is, is that everyone that's out there that may be thinking about cutting down a wooded lot would say, well, you know, this is before the City Council. It might get passed in three months. We're gonna go and clear-cut our lot now and get it out of the way so that we don't have to necessarily go through this process. And the, the, the language here, and I hope that Amy can back me up, is, uh, and, and I'm actually, you know what, Amy? I, I might need to stop and have you help me out, 'cause now that I'm thinking, that's in a different section. So, um, you know, Attorney Shea, let, let me start over. To be honest with you, when we were working on this, we, we tried to like, put it together based on other city ordinances so that we tried best to use language that, you know, was already established law within the city. Reading this a little bit further and taking another second, this might actually just be some boilerpoint language that was included in another, another existing ordinance within the city. So I, I actually think it might just need to be taken out if you don't really think it adds anything, is my honest opinion.
Yeah, I thought that was boilerplate, again, added by Ken. But Ken, you didn't add that? 'Cause that was like a boilerplate thing to just kind of cover the bases of, um, anything that might be linked to this. That, it wasn't something that SCANS added.
Yeah, right.
I mean, we might be able to come up with something that...
Because I like, I like what Jay is talking about, like, the people applied. It should apply based on what's happening, what's going on.
Yeah, but, but that's a different section, Counselor Gobon.
You would have to look back there.
Okay, okay.
Read this piece.
So, yeah, what do you think, Attorney?
I'm wondering if we re-craft that, that we say that it, that... I think what you're trying to get at, Alex, when this comes in front of the City Council, remember, it'll leak out prior to then. So that's another thing we have to be concerned about, is that either we, we implement a freeze on the removal of any trees until this statute is resolved by the City Council. So I don't know if the council could vote to put a freeze on the removal of trees while this is being debated, or if that...
Can I just interject? So we, we have that in a later, in a later clause, because freeze would not succeed. But, um, so what we have is what's called a look-back period. This was something, again, we took from other ordinances that say like, from the time of this ordinance's discussion into like a look-back period. Now, I, the language might not be sufficient. So Ken, it would be great to get your feedback on this. But what it says is that basically from the point of this going back, and I think we put in like 48 months, just again, 'cause we know it'll probably be negotiated down to like 36 months, that, so that they can't do what you're describing. But that's in a later clause.
No, maybe I should, I just would like maybe to work on that language, because it's a little wordy, and when you get all done with it, I'm still laughing, well, what are you trying to accomplish? I think you're trying to put a freeze on the items, and, you know, it's sort of dancing around, but it's, I think we oughta make it a little more direct, if that's the purpose of this piece. What you're trying to do is when this comes in front of the council, everything stops until the council, you know, the lot has to be in the status it was in when the council started the process. Is that the goal here?
We didn't write this clause, I thought you did? Or that Jay got it from a city clause, like a city ordinance?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So is there a way...
A different part of the ordinance, which we will get to later, that has the look-back period.
But is there a way, Ken, for you to like write something on there that's saying what you wanted to say?
Let me take another, I may come back to what that is, but let me, I just...
And if not, we can take it out if, if it's not necessary.
I don't wanna take it out at this juncture, because...
No, no, but I'm saying, look at it and see if you can write it in a way that could be applicable.
I actually want it to be a little tighter than what it is.
Okay, make it tight then.
And then, um, how does this work? Okay, I guess we're back to the same thing, 'cause the very last thing, the look-back period, which might be what we're trying to accomplish. "The terms and provisions of this chapter shall presume the existing condition of the tree canopy of the parcel as was defined 48 months before the application submission date of a Woodlands removal permit." So tell me how that works, I guess. How does this work?
Just go, take one step back to Section B.
Yeah.
5,000 square foot size limit.
Yeah.
We define, well, the ordinance defines a woodland as an, an area comprising of continuous trees of 15,000 square feet or more.
Yeah.
So to be a dis, you know, disconnect there between what we're defining as a woodland that we wanna protect, and then what the ordinance actually applies to. So I just, I don't know if that's a problem, but I just wanted to point that out, that we're saying a woodland is 15,000 square, or more, 15,000 square feet or more. And then we're saying, but then we're saying the woodland ordinance applies to parcels greater, 5,000 square, or greater than 5,000 square.
I just noticed that.
Yeah.
I, I think that's an inadvertent...
It might be a type...
That just came from, you know, the back and forth that SCANS has had with the, with the city and with the Parks Department. Um, so Amy, I, I love your input here. I think our intent, meaning SCANS, is if you go back to Section 2 definitions, where it says the last definition of woodlands, I think our intent was that it would read 5,000, not 15,000. I suspect 15,000 was a number that we tossed around at some point before we landed on the more aggressive 5. So I think for right now, the desire would be for that definition to say 5,000. And then I think everyone's kind of discussed ad nauseam that it's probably going to be a negotiation, you know, that's gonna occur, you know? But, but that's the goal of SCANS.
The woodlands at the top should be changed to 5.
Right, yes.
Yeah, that would make more sense.
You agree, Amy?
Thank you, Alex, for that.
Okay, I think those were, those were the bulk of the areas where I thought, you know, we needed to make some changes, or the rest of it is, is when the, is the meat of the whole thing, and it's well-defined. It, it's pretty clear, it sets out what we're trying to accomplish, and it's pretty clear. There's no weasel, what we call weasel words, or paragraphs that run on. When you get done reading them, you're not quite sure what it's trying to accomplish. Or there's no paragraph where someone could weave in and say, well, that really doesn't apply to me based on the way I'm reading this paragraph compared to a paragraph someplace else. So that's what you have to make sure, that everything is consistent when you go through it. So by the time you get to the last page, you haven't found something that kicks out, something that was on the first page. Follow what I'm saying? Yeah. Well, that was, that was...
Now, the look-back period.
No.
All right, is that okay, the way we have it there?
Yes, I think it is.
Okay.
Yeah.
But I just make another suggestion as I'm reading through this.
Yes.
Look, the Urban Woodlands, a commission, there's seven volunteer members. Seems like community members, the, the city, the city entity members outnumber the community members. It'd be the other way around. I don't see the need for two forestry division appointees, so maybe we could reduce that to one, and then add another community member so that the community members outweigh the city, you know, the city entities.
That's an idea. So then would, one, two, three, four. So we would take out the, the forestry division member?
Yeah, just reduce that to one. I, my, the version I'm reading reads two members from for, from the forestry division.
It has been reduced to one.
Oh, okay.
However, um, the way I see it, it's seven members. Four members are appointed by the mayor. And I don't know if the mayor is going to appoint someone from the forestry division. You know what I mean? Or...
I guess I saw those positions as, you know, similar to the, you know, Park Commission where there are community members.
Members, okay.
But I mean, I don't know if that's defined there. I suppose the mayor can appoint whoever he wants.
Yes, yeah. So I, I think we should add then four community members appointed by the mayor. Do, can we do that?
Okay, so, so, Zeta, I think you're looking at a slightly different one. So the most recent one, I thought we said one from the Office of Planning Development, and we said two from the forestry, 'cause we thought Alex would want it. So we did, so we'll reduce that to one.
Luckily, you have one, yeah.
And then we had one from the Springfield City Council, and then we had reduced it to three by the mayor, because we wanted there to be a little bit more of a spread. So I don't know if, how to do this, but if we're only gonna have three from the Office of Planning, the Forestry, and then the City Council, and then we're gonna then give the mayor four, I would like to then do something with the E, where it just says right now, "Members of the Urban Woodlands Commission shall be qualified city residents who have the requisite ability and training or experience." I don't know if we wanna say something there, 'cause I am a little concerned then that if the mayor gets four slots and we get a mayor, you know, several years from now, that's like, well, I'm gonna appoint two developers to this. Like, there's, there's really nothing, I don't know, there's, I don't know if we can do anything, but, um...
So, so we don't have the one that says the, um, the Urban Woodlands Commission for some reason?
Okay, I just sent, I sent it back out to everybody, so it's in your most recent email. Um, and, um, yeah, so we had, so maybe Ken doesn't have this one either. Ken, do you have the one that says establishment of an Urban Woodlands Commission?
I have E.
What I have is C, and has one member from Office of Planning, one from Forestry, one from City Council. Four members by the mayor, that's what I...
Oh, yeah, so we had tweaked, we had tweaked that a little bit at the last discussion between...
E and F. Ken.
What's that?
There's E and F, so...
Oh, I don't, I don't have E and F.
Yeah, so that's, this is the newer one, because we wanted to make sure that when their appointments are made, we don't wanna limit the mayor, obviously. They're the elected official, and they're the mayor of the city. But we wanted to somehow kind of vindicate, to Alex's point, that these be, you know, community members, not, you know, city officials or... You know, city officials or, you know, commercial real estate developers. But that they be community members with the, you know, somebody like a Dave Bloniers or something, somebody that. You know, actually has the training and ability to to do this.
Right, yeah.
So um so if you look at the most recent one that I just sent fifteen minutes ago. We can adjust that down to one Office of Planning, one Forestry, because. We thought Alex that you might want to, um and then one from the City Council, three from the mayor, and then is that language? Strong enough, members of the Urban Woodlands Commission shall be qualified city residents who have the requisite ability and training or experience. We took that from a a a eastern mass ordinance. That's how they worded it for their woodlands ordinance people.
That's fine. I'm I'm wondering, and I'm thinking in my head, if we could actually state. Well, we've changed it that that we would, the people appointed. How to say it, would would not be, could not be developers, okay? Flat out say, we don't want developers.
Right. Because city residents could be developers themselves.
They could. Let's go.
We could, I guess we could put wording in, Ken, what I don't know if this is legal wording. Um but um requisite ability and training or experience in woodlands conservation. Just by putting, then we're not.
That would, that would probably get around what I was trying to do directly.
Right.
Why don't you use, let's use that word.
Use that language, comes with this conservation.
Then one could argue if they appointed a developer, well, you know.
They have to have, yeah.
Could you say?
They rarely do conservation.
Did you say without ties to the development business or something like that?
I I think that's getting too bold, and it looks like you're trying to stack it. And so now you're gonna run into an equality issue, so you wanna you wanna skirt, we're we're. Playing with thin ice as we go down this path, and I think Amy's point is probably the better way to do it. Because you, what you don't want to do is to throw some language in that's a red flag to somebody to challenge. And I think that language, a flag would, wait a minute, we we we're developers, we've got an entrance in the city, you're you're uh. Making it hard for me to make a living and do stuff, and you're barring me from this, and I've got an expert in woodlands, and I'm not gonna ruin the place, and. As an item.
Right, right.
I take it back, I take it back.
So I want to recognize Counselor Davila, thank you for being here. Amy, um so you're gonna add that to the um thing right there? Okay, great.
Are you taking notes, Amy, Amy? Somebody is, I'm just.
Amy and Jay.
I'm writing stuff out, but I'm not writing new stuff down.
Thank you, guys. Thank you so much.
I like to eliminate.
In real time, so I'll I'll share my notes with you, Amy, but maybe. I'll entrust you to kind of have a finalized thing, so it's only one person sending out the next file. And we don't, so I'm only gonna send what I'm typing out to you.
So I think what we're gonna do, I think we have a great. Ordinance, and thank you so much, Ken. Thank you, Alex, and the Forestry Department. Um scans and um SCJC. Jay and Amy, I have to say, you guys were. Um basically put this together, and I so appreciate it. Um it's something that our city needs and that. Our country needs, and the world needs, um and we're hoping to be able to, you know, push this through, hopefully before the end of summer, so we can start saving our trees. Um I think my next step and my next plan, I think you all mentioned it before, is to have a meeting with the mayor. I want to meet with the mayor, maybe with. Um Amy and Jay, um and we can go in and and, you know, see what his thoughts are, and see if we can have him um. Give his stamp of approval, so that we could bring it to the city council. Sounds good.
Counselor Govan, thank you so much for your persistence and diligence. Jay and I might have done the technical work, but you've done a lot of the heavy lifting. And brought us all together, so thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you so much for um just being here. I just, I love my community, I always say that, and it's really, really the truth, I really do. Um again, any last questions or comments, concerns?
I I do, but before I I say anything, Counselor, I just wanted to um know if Counselor Davila wanted to add anything. I I know he's been on for a little while.
Uh no, 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 I think you guys do a lot of work, and I'm just happy that this is coming to fruition.
Thank you, counselors. I I just had two things I wanted to mention. The first one is to Attorney Shay. I I'm hoping you know this, but um. I don't know if you printed out the ordinance in um color or in black and white ink, but. If you um print it out by chance in color. You'll see there's a couple of things that are in in red. Some of them we put in red, maybe just to kind of inform Counselor Govan that we anticipated they might be. I'll call them negotiation items, right? Like, so they express. They could be like square footage or percentages, or the cost of a fine, or the cost of removing a tree. We're just trying to say like, these are our numbers, but um you know, I know that when it goes before the city council. You're gonna have thirteen people with thirteen different views, and and we can understand these might be some of the. Topics, so I wanted to bring that to your attention, but also. That there were just some different areas, like in the definition section, and then in um. The section that's called Urban Woodlands Renewal Permit, where you'll see some things written in in red and italicized. And that was really our way just to say to you, you know, we're not lawyers, um it might be appropriate to cite some. Existing city law or state law, but we're really not sure what, so. I just wanted to call that to your attention, so that as this um ordinance goes to final stage, that you. Understood, you know, what um our thoughts were, um although I will say, I think we did a pretty decent job for not being lawyers.
He made it clear at every meeting, he says, I'm not a lawyer, but he was acting, no, I'm only kidding.
I think if anything's in color, it should be in green anyway.
Right, 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 right.
That's fair. Um so the only other thing, um Counselor Govan.
Ken, if you look at the red things and let us know what you thought.
I did, well, no, I I will.
And if you can cite anything, you can let us know. Okay, he'll do that.
Okay, thank you.
I thought that woodlands remove that, I thought that it it looks like it was lifted from an existing permit somewhere.
I think it's a combination of um di- you know, different um. Ordinances throughout the state and the country, but. Was through scans, working with the forestry division. Um you know, Alex and Nick and others, or Nate, excuse me, just to kind of like get input from everyone's side.
I mean, it it's, I thought it was pretty clear, and I didn't find anything where you could start playing games with the language. Like, it reads like it came from an already existing statutes. And and we do like all lawyers do, we just plagiarized it, um even though we might sue someone for.
Okay.
I had an original contract since the thirteen hundreds. We just plagiarized our way right through in the law business. But don't you guys try it. But anyway, no, I think that that, I wouldn't play around with that too much.
Okay, understood.
We may cause more problems than we solve if we start tinkering with that, because it looks like it's been tried. It exists other places, and no major red flags have gone up.
Okay, um so I only had one other question. I had brought this up to Counselor Govan ahead of the meeting. It it I realize it might be an oversight on our part. And the one piece that I was thinking that this ordinance might be lacking. Is a notification process, and I I want to use a a specific example, so. Um the most recent example of clear cutting. Um that I know about happened just about two weeks ago on Tinkum Road by the um. Macedonia Church, which is um across the street from D Y S. Um a a developer who owns the land um has cleared it. Um we're not sure what the proposal will be just yet, but we know. That, you know, they did a big clear cut. It it's a big lot, it probably goes back. It's probably at least a hundred feet of frontage, and then it goes back several hundred feet into the woods, so it's it's significant. Um we do know, um and and I haven't spoken to Alex Sherman about this, but I I did know. From talking to Counselor Click Bruce, that, you know, we think they did the right thing, they approached the forestry division, they they made sure. They followed all the existing rules, so that's that's well and good, that's their right to do, we don't have this ordinance yet. But um a lot of people came to us in in my role as the Sixteen Acre Civic Association to say, hey, what's going on? And we didn't really know either, and so what occurred to me with this is. This ordinance doesn't really speak to when someone petitions, when they file a permit. Whether or not there should be a a notification sent to a butters. The way there would be like if you went for a special permit or went before the Z B A for a variance. And so my ask, I guess, to you, Attorney Shay, is number one. What do you think about that? And number two, if you think it's appropriate. You know, could you help us with some language that would require? A notification to a butters within a a reasonable um geographic area, you know. Usually it's like within a hundred feet or three hundred feet of the subject parcel, something like that.
I I think we we have some statutes on the books for other things in which a butters get notified. Uh and I would think that. We could add that language to this. And I thought there was something in here where they they did get noticed, but maybe it's not here. But that would not, that would not be an unreasonable thing to put in, notice to a butters. Pretty common, a lot of statutes.
Right, and that's what I thought too. So we'd put it in here, where would that be, let me see?
Well, you could, you could put it into.
X five, maybe?
Yeah, in the woodland permit section, because that that's studying forth what's gonna occur, so you could put it right up. Right up near the beginning.
Right. So, yeah, we can put it right there.
Okay.
Because the planning board. And a lot of the stuff with the planning board, when you get down to see, a lot of their stuff has requires notice to a butters. Um and so upon the planning board's review of the of the project hearing, so, yeah, it would make sense to put it in there.
Okay, great, great. Do you feel comfortable recommending some language and where it might go?
Yeah, well, yeah, I I would put it in the. In the section that we're in, woodlands, and then I'll try to get a butter language.
Yeah, because it's in almost all, um when you request a zone change. That language is in every requirement.
I was gonna say, maybe what we could do for now, Jay, is you just put it in your notes, and then. I don't know if you would have the time to quickly look up. But if you don't, you can just almost make a note there, like. Please.
I I know what you're saying.
Yeah, like, please add that, blah blah.
You've got it.
Probably have it in some of the stuff you've gone through.
Right, yep, yep.
And if if you if you've got tree ordinances that you've been looking at.
They must have some.
And they've got a butter language, let's pull that out and we'll look at it. I mean, if you've got that, if you don't, we'll we'll go to the planning board language and and. You know, doctor it up, so it looks like it belongs here.
Excellent. Thank you for that. I I uh almost forgot about that, Jay. And he's just told me like half an hour before.
It's a process. Thank you, Counselor.
To do, no problem, thank you. Anyone else? Any last comments or questions? No, thank you. Thank you all so much. I'll give you fifteen minutes, fourteen minutes back. You guys have a great afternoon. Thank you.
Bye.